By my watch. Alright, so we can call the meeting to order. For panel select board for regular scheduled meeting for Thursday, May 9th, 2019, meeting at 7:00 PM. So, on the agenda tonight, our agenda approval, then approval of minutes for 424, 425, 52 and 57. Warrants, mail, public comment, town administrators' report consisting of adopt local emergency management plan, LEMP, request to hold forum for Shire's housing, request to explore code adoption, hazardous mitigation committee, request to post for zoning administrators and health officer, combined or separate positions, question. Request to attend economic summit on May 23rd at Mountain Snow at a cost of $75 plus mileage, and renew MVP health plan. Then old business with Ralph Mima?
Mima.
Mima? Boy, I got it wrong both times. Sorry about that. For Green Mountain Solar regarding town solar projects, and proposal on select board member terms and other appointees with stipends, proration of select board stipend for resignation, rules of procedure, town office discussion. Then moving on to new business regarding Snake Hill Road and slope failure bid. And then personnel for executive session if needed, or necessary, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, may I request a change in the order so Mr. Mima can go first? He's traveled quite a ways, and to have him sit through the entire...
That's fine, we can move him up. Joel was requesting we move him up as well, so he can give his update and get out of here.
That'll be fine, yeah. Thank you.
Alright, so, I'll make a motion that we move Joel up for new business up to right after public comment regarding Snake Hill Road. And then, if everybody's okay with it, let Ralph go afterward.
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have a motion to make the changes as stated. Any discussion? Or any other discussion on changing the agenda? Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries? Alright, so Joel, you'll go right after public comment, and you'll go right after Joel? Alright, no problem. Alright, so, I'll hear a motion to accept the agenda then.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda for May 9th, as stated.
Alright, we have a motion to accept the agenda as stated. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Alright, approving the agenda. Alright, so... So let's approve the minutes for 424, 425, 52 and 57. I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 424, 425, 52 and 57. I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the minutes as stated. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Alright, alright, so, on to warrants. Alright, so, warrants, payroll ending in 428 in the amount of $7,949.2. Payroll ending 55 in the amount of $10,543.50. Accounts payable, 44, on 53 in the amount of $11,415.78. Accounts payable, 44A, on 54 in the amount of $4,602.64. And accounts payable on 45, or sorry, 45, on 510 in the amount of $12,245.68.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the warrants as stated.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to accept the warrants as stated. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Alright, warrants are accepted. Alright, on to the mail. Anything interesting for us, Michael?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the first order is Mr. Ray Rodriguez is here, and there is one more caveat to the hiking trail that's down by the wastewater treatment plant. This is already approved project, he has the youth group lined up and ready to go, ready to operate. They decided that because the land, if you look at the circular area, the gravel area where typically people would park, from there to the entrance to the park is kind of soggy, so they requested a boardwalk. The boardwalk would not touch any, would not disturb any soil laying on top, but because there's a notification, we request that you make an approval, and then you would sign on behalf of the board this letter, so he can get it to Recreation Trails Program Manager as one of the several steps he has to do to make sure that this is approved. He's here to explain it if need be, but it's a small item that he's got to rearrange the grant monies to make this happen. They've been working really hard, they've been working very hard on this to make this happen, and it's just one last hurdle. And I request you, the board, approve it and...
He's just seeking approval from the town?
It's not going to cost anything.
It's not going to cost us anything either.
Yeah, it's not going to cost us anything.
No, no, no cost accounting, nothing.
Okay. The select board has to approve it in order to, in order, we have to endorse the grant.
Endorse it, approve it, support it.
For the grant process.
And then, does it change the grant amount?
No. It involves revising the budget to accommodate the cost of the board.
So it does change the, it does change the grant amount, is that correct?
Not the total amount, it changes the distribution within the grant.
Oh, okay, that's...
They're taking from the left pocket to put it in the right.
Uh, yes.
I'll motion to approve.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the request. Is there any discussion on it? Alright, all in favor of signing the request as stated? Say aye.
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 All opposed?
Like it.
You're not leaving already, Ray, are you?
You two pisses very fast.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Ray.
Mr. Chairman, Craig Odell, Craig Odell, our emergency manager.
Do we need a copy of that?
Uh, he can give me a copy. You can make me a copy?
I hereby nominate Michael to run the copy machine.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you thought you were getting out quick? And you thought you were getting out quick?
Yeah, I tried.
I'm a multi-tasker. Request that the board approve the emergency management plan. This was written by our emergency management director, Ann Linda. Are they on five years now, or how many years before we redo it?
It's done yearly.
It's done yearly? It's done yearly. It would be approved by you, and there's a signature page coming.
So Craig, and you work on that?
Yeah, they did all the work.
Sorry, Craig, have a good evening.
Are there any significant changes to it?
No, just updates.
And there's a signature page coming around, you said?
Apparently, right?
There's a signature page coming to the town.
And Mr. Odell has been spot on when we've had recent emergencies and flooding emergencies, so he's top shelf at this.
And you said there was no significant changes, just updates?
Just updates. Sometimes officers change within the fire department. The senior citizens building was removed as a vulnerable population because no one uses the building any longer, so that was removed from a couple of sections.
Okay.
The ACO's phone number was inserted.
The what?
Animal control, so it was a religious phone number, so...
Okay.
Minor changes.
Did we go out of sequence? We kind of skipped ahead, didn't we?
Do we need to fix that?
Still.
Okay. Should we add the deputy too?
That's brand new, so...
Alright, so we can put that in actually. Alright.
Add it as a dendum.
I was just asking about a question about officials that were, that are listed in there for contacts. Michael's not listed as the deputy, but he was, we appointed him deputy after that had been crafted, so...
Okay.
That's not reflected in this update.
You can add it.
Got that in the email.
Yeah, let's add that. And then, Linda, there was some mention in there off the top of my head, I don't remember what it said, for sheltering? So what are we identifying as our shelters? Emergency shelters?
The emergency shelter is your Red Cross, for your Red Cross is the school.
Right, and that was the only one that's listed in there? And the two firehouses listed as alternate locations? One's down on 346, and then one is?
Right here.
One here.
The 466.
Yeah, and the other one in South Paul.
Okay.
Okay, alright, I'll hear a motion to approve the hazard, the emergency management plan.
Well, re-adopt it.
Re-adopt it, sorry.
Motion to re-adopt the local emergency management plan?
With, with Michael?
With Michael listed as deputy.
Sounds good to me. Alright, so we have a motion in a second to approve, to adopt the local emergency management plan, the changes as noted. All in favor, any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, that's approved.
Mr. Chairman, the employee health insurance MVP coverage needs to be signed.
Uh, hold on, I think we actually skipped from mail down into your report. We skipped public comment.
Yeah, oh, we did skip public comment.
Sorry. I think we distracted you when we asked you to photocopy the thing from right.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Did you have any other mail?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, let's jump back up to that.
Employee health insurance, MVP.
That's listed under your town admin, under your administrator report, further down the agenda.
Okay, because it was in the mail, I beg your pardon. Spring planning and zoning forum, Tuesday, June 18th, Lake Maury Resort, Vermont, Neagues and Cities and Towns.
Well, just got an email today about this.
Yeah.
And as you're...
You really need to start offering stuff on weekends.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how they get the lower rates at the hotels. We have excess weight applications for your approval. Davey Oil Incorporated, Michael Tatrow, Maxon. Tatrow. Maxon Trucking Limited, and William Lounsbury, approved by the road foreman.
Motion to take it. Sign.
I'll second that.
Permit.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion in a second to sign the excess weight permit. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Alright.
Is it just one signature? There's nothing to sign?
Oh, okay, I was going to say there's something to sign. Thank you.
Anybody want to see them?
And the only other thing here is my appointment as deputy health officer, and you already know that. That's it for mail, sir.
Okay. So move on to public comment?
I have something for public comment. So last night at the Economic Development Committee...
Please introduce yourself to the people at home.
Marlena Pilon, Select Woman, last night...
But you're not speaking on behalf of the select board.
I'm not speaking on behalf of the select board, I'm speaking on behalf of an inquiry made at the Economic Development Committee last night regarding the Pownell Elementary School, and where it stood and what's happening with redistricting. I reached out to the Pownell School Board, who does not have any information at this time. The courts haven't given them any information, the judge hasn't given them any information, and they assured me that as soon as they have information, they will reach out to the community members, and the community at large, and the select board, and give us information, but right now they don't have anything to share, offer, or provide. And if community members are really nervous and passionate about saving our school, they request that the community come out and support their efforts at the next Pownell Elementary School Board meeting on May 5th, I'm sorry, May 15th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at Pownell Elementary School. And if you have any further questions, to please reach out directly to the Pownell Elementary School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, moving on to your administrative report now, Mike.
Well, I thought we were going to change the sequence.
Oh, sorry, you're right, thank you for the correction. Sorry, Mike, you're on hold. Alright, Joel, you're up.
Okay, as you know, we put the Snake Hill bid out. So, O'Donovan was a high bidder, $97,600. Weaver Excavating was $89,000. Bazan Excavating was $81,500. I'd like to recommend hiring Bazan, I guess, to do it. That's Snake Hill slope failure.
Okay, that's your recommendation?
Yes.
So you're recommending because of the quality of work, and because of the low bid?
Price, yeah.
I mean, because I know if you feel that you get, even if somebody isn't the lowest bid, but if your opinion...
That's right, yeah.
I'm just asking your, you know, from your past, past experience, if you feel...
Different bid.
Okay, so, but if you're with a low bid, then... I have no issues, I trust Joel, so...
I trust your opinion on this. Alright, and I'll hear a motion to accept the bid.
Motion to accept the bid.
Second it.
Alright, we have a motion to accept Mr. Bazan for the bid for doing the work on the Snake Hill Road slope failure. All in, any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Alright.
And actually, Linda has the bids if anybody wants to...
Right here, if you'd like to look at them. Thank you.
I trust Joel's judgment.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you, Joel.
He's the one that has to answer to it. Thank you, Joel.
Keep an eye on those cost containment. Thank you, have a good night.
Alright.
Mr. Ralph Mima.
Good evening. First of all, that was very thoughtful of you, Mike, to allow me to go earlier. I started this morning at a site in Weathersfield at 7:30, and then I was in Rutland, Fairhaven, and Shaftesbury, and wrapping up here. So it's been a big loop today, and I got to get up early in the morning to take somebody to the airport in Boston, so I really appreciate it. So there are three different projects that I'd like to give you a quick update about tonight, and one of them actually involves, or two of them involve a request as well. And so this was good timing, Mike, to suggest that I come and brief the board, give you guys an update. I think that...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, did you announce who you were and where you're from?
Ralph Mima, representing Green Lantern, and I live in Brattleboro.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you for reminding.
And I think there's been a lot of turnover in the board since I last spoke to this select board. So a number of you aren't really familiar with these projects, and this is a good opportunity to get everyone up to speed. So the three projects are what we call Pownell Transfer East, which is the capped landfill. When you go into the transfer station, it's the one up on your, on your right, where you can actually see white gas vents up on top of it. That's, we call that Pownell Transfer East. The second project, we call Pownell Landfill, but it's really, it's not classified as a landfill yet. It's just an old dump with earth on top of it. And it's the field that you see when you drive into the transfer station on your left. And then the third one is the landfill, the raised-up landfill that contains hazardous waste, which is an EPA Superfund site next to the wastewater treatment facility. And so those are the three different projects where a year ago, a little bit over a year ago, I think it was like April 20th, or something like that, we signed lease option agreements with the town for all three of these projects. And what's happened in the year since is that they're all in very different places in terms of how much progress we've been able to make. I'll start with Pownell Transfer East first. We got the certificate of public good, in other words, the general permit for that project, on November 20th. And work has been moving along fairly smoothly. There've been a lot of different loose ends to tie up, and different things to take care of. One little detail was that it turned out that that parcel actually had a non-discharged mortgage still encumbering it. So I think there was some superhuman work that your attorney had to do along with the probate court in Bennington.
Town clerk as well.
Town clerk as well. Finally get the paper together to be able to discharge that. I really appreciate your going to all the trouble to do that, because that was just one thing standing in the way of us being able to finance the project. That's done. Another key thing is that because it's on a capped landfill, it's necessary to go through what's called a post-closure certification amendment application through the Department of Environmental Conservation. And in order to do that, we don't have the expertise in-house to make judgments about whether or not a project is going to be in compliance with the landfill regulations. So we, we have a contractor, Sanborn Head, that does a lot of this type of work all around northern New England. And we contracted with them to do the geotech work and the landfill inspection, basically, and then recommendations for certain things that we'll have to make sure we incorporate when we construct the array. And I can tell you that our 90% design drawings were handed over yesterday to Sanborn Head so that they could complete the application, send it into Budser Willow at DEC, and then it could take up to a month to get an answer from DEC about whether or not our project qualifies, but that's essential, that's got to happen. And so that's imminent. As soon as that report is complete, I'll send Mike a copy, so you have one for your own records. It mostly gets into things like, you know, don't build on slopes that are too steep, and use a certain amount of gravel as a pad underneath the ballast blocks, and that type of thing, really, just to make sure that the cap isn't punctured or otherwise damaged by stuff sliding off and so forth. That's a key piece, and you know, that's a significant investment for us, too. It's about an $11,000 engineering exercise, but it's got to be done. Another thing is that when we reach this point in the process, we normally reach out to the highways foreman to make sure that the road access and the curb cuts, if those are necessary, is not in this case, but that, you know, the road access and the condition of the road that would be used to access the construction site is all okay. So that'll be, that'll be happening shortly. Can you squeeze by me here?
Yeah.
And then...
How do you want to be moved?
Oh, no. So that's, that's in the works, and what is the name of your highways foreman?
Joel Burnt.
Oh, that was Joel right there?
Yes.
Okay, great, well, that's good to know. So he'll be hearing from us on that point. And then one other thing that's also essential for us to be able to close and get the financing for a solar project that's net metered, this is a net metered solar project, is that we have to have what we call an off-taker, or a net metering customer. And that's usually a town, it's a school, a hospital, something like that. I can tell you, for example, that, you know, the 500 kilowatt project we did up in North Pownell on the Maxon-O'Donovan property is, the off-taker is actually Mount Snow for that. So we always need a third party in the picture, there's us, there's the power company, there's the off-taker. Last summer, I did a lot of work going to school district board meetings to try to convince Pownell, Bennington, Shaftesbury, and/or Woodford to sign up for capacity on this array. And they all decided not to move ahead with that type of thing at the moment, they had various different reasons. So in the end, it's turned out that there's a school in the Essex School District that is going to be buying the net metering credits, but at least it's done. So that's one other thing we've got checked off, so we can go ahead with that project. And that's pretty much it for the moment. I mean, once the post-closure comes through, we will go from 90% to 100% in the engineering drawings, and we've got to get that thing built, you know, by November 20th at the latest, but it's, but we want to do it middle of the summer, I think. So that's the status on that, and I'll ask if there are any questions you might have.
So that's only the net metering, Essex is buying the net metering credits for just the Pownell Transfer Station East?
That's right, that's right, just that one. Yep.
So do you advertise to other businesses within the state? Or are you looking more school systems and municipalities right now?
We always start first with the municipalities, the school systems, the big hospitals and other, you know, really established nonprofits, fire districts, waste districts.
What about state buildings? Or states staying out of the...
The state has a whole different solar procurement thing that we haven't really been able, we haven't focused too much on. But we have approached a certain number of businesses as well.
And the hospital had no interest, SVMC or UCS?
You know, I need to go back to them. What they did was they signed up for a lot of net metering credits from the Tannery Dam. And then there's some other solar project that they're also involved in. And then what happened was, I mean, they've got a huge amount of appetite. They could, they could use dozens of arrays. But in the middle of all of that, I guess about two years ago, the regulations were changed, and they put a cap in of 500 kilowatts per customer. And so even these huge users of electricity can't go beyond that cap. We're hoping, by the way, legislature willing, that that cap will get eliminated or raised at the current session.
Is that the bill that's before them now?
It's S-95, I think.
Yeah.
Keeping an eye on it.
I've reported on that.
And I'm hoping, too, that Nelson Brunel, having worked a lot with this type of thing here,
Right.
will vote favorably. But anyway, that's, I mean, I get too far down that rabbit hole. But, so we have most of the important pieces in place, and of course, we'll be coordinating the start of actual construction closely with Mike, Linda, and Tom Chui. So now, so the most has happened there, I mean, that project's just about to really get some traction. The next one is what we call Pownell Landfill. And actually, we're waiting to see how the funding for a Phase II environmental site assessment is, how the funding is actually going to come through, and do you have any updates?
Yes, the funding has been approved, they're going to the bond bank.
Oh, nice.
So we should hear any day. And the service agreement is completed, signed by the board. We already paid for that scope of service agreement, and as soon as we find out that the bond has been issued, we'll start work.
That's fantastic, that's really great. And so before that, until that Phase II ESA is done, we don't even really know what the sort of environmental state of that site is, and what sort of corrective actions would have to be taken. Would it have to be capped? Would there have to be some sort of curtain drain or drainage system put in at the wetland side of it? You know, it's anybody's guess at this point. But once that's cleared up, you know, we would love, we had all of the materials pretty much put together for a permit application. So we'd like to move ahead with that, whenever it's possible. But here's a request. The lease option agreement for that site with the town, between us and the town, expired on April 30th. And I would like to have that lease option agreement extended for, I don't know, I think because there's so much uncertainty about what they're going to find, you know, up to a year. Because we'd still like to do the project, and you know, don't see any reason why not to if the ESA comes out, you know, where we want it to. So I don't have, I don't have the extension agreement with me. I need to sit down and write it up, but I could certainly get it to you by early next week.
Perfect.
And I don't know, is that something that would require a select board decision? Okay, so I'd like to make that request. And then the other project is the wastewater treatment facility site. And I decided to kind of hold back on that one, because I didn't want too many projects with too many loose ends all potentially getting tangled up with each other at the moment. I think it's really important that we get Pownell Transfer East launched. And meanwhile, we're waiting to see what happens with Pownell Landfill. And the Superfund site has enough additional complications that have to do with EPA and Superfund, that I decided to sort of take it slowly. But a few months ago, I communicated with Mike and with Tricia Coppolino at DEC about what would be required in order to even ask for a change of use on top of that site, because it's a Superfund site, and it's federally regulated. it's a Superfund site and it's federally regulated. And you had some communication with them and you said, "Well, the next thing that you'd like to see from us is like a preliminary design, like a sketch." And so I requested and just fairly recently got, I think two days ago, got the sketch that was circulated. And that's not necessarily what anything looked like there, but the reason I wanted to show that to you is that that is a 150-kilowatt array. So that has the same power output as the one that will be up on the landfill at the transfer station. And the first, so it's good to understand the perspective. And what you can see there is that there's probably room up on that surface for more capacity than just that. So one of the questions I had for Seth Goddard, who's our civil engineer, who just does that kind of work, is what would be the maximum capacity that you could put up there? Because number one, that increases the power output, and it increases all the other benefits that these projects involve, including we would pay more for the land. It would generate more tax revenue for the town. It would generate more tax revenue for the state. And I don't have a, you know, a completely adequate answer from him yet, but I will be following up tomorrow probably, just to see what his answer is. So that's where we are in the process. And I think, once we have a scale that we're comfortable with, which I think will be larger than that, then I'll send that...
Okay.
To you, Mike.
The change use letter went to Trish. Did you get your copy or...
I don't think so.
All right, I'll follow up on that.
Maybe I missed it. I thought you were waiting for the design.
Waiting on the design, but the narrative, I think, was completed, so...
Well, that's great.
So it's just a simple matter of getting that design and...
Okay.
And maybe that's why I didn't send it.
But, I mean, you can use this or you can wait for something that's a bit more qualified. So that's where we are with that one. And, you know, I wanna go very, proceed very cautiously, just because it's an EPA site. The one thing I will add, too, is that this site also needs to have the lease option agreement extended. They were all, all three lease option agreements were signed and dated the same time, just over a year ago. And so this one ran out the same day that the other one ran out. We already have a lease in place and a memorandum of lease that's been recorded with the town for the other project, so that's all signed and sealed. And I'm happy to answer any questions, anything you're curious about.
So I believe when they got done doing that Superfund site, there was left to the town some rules of what to do, you know, do's and don'ts. Have we given them a copy of that?
Yeah, they have.
So as far as, I mean, if we stay within those guidelines, we should be able to move forward, I would think.
Mm-hmm.
As far as not puncturing the, so we'd have to bring in material, obviously, to take and set the pillars and stuff on, so...
Yep. And we would use ballast blocks there. There'd be no penetration of the surface.
So I didn't, I guess that's where I'm questioning any, unless there's other issues that you've heard about on other sites.
No, and actually, we are, we're doing quite a few landfills these days. And the only difference about that one is that it's a Superfund site, so there might be additional considerations.
That's why I was asking if there was, if we've already got, if we've got from the feds the do's and don'ts, then if we stay within that guideline, we should be buying...
It was a fairly restrictive document that they followed, we followed, so it's to the letter.
But what we will have to do is some, is whatever the equivalent is of the post-closure certification amendment, that EPA will have a lot of, a lot to say about as well. And whatever the criteria are, they would be a little bit different in some ways, I'm not exactly sure how, from the criteria that we have to fulfill for the one-up of the transfer station. Good to see.
I have an inquiry. Are any of our current town locations pulling any electricity from any of the solar arrays that are currently running? Another one, our race track's not up yet, but are we, is the municipality gonna be tied into these credits?
Yeah, so that was a piece of unfinished business that I started looking at a year ago, and the question is, another way to phrase it is, which town meters are not part of a net metering agreement somewhere? And I think that there, I think that some of the town meters are getting discounted net metering credits from the Tannery Dam as well.
Right, yes, they are.
But it doesn't max out what the town is eligible to utilize.
And that was gonna be my next question, was if we haven't hit that max, we can pull from other arrays, so...
And I have that, and I got, I actually got that information from Linda and put together an estimate. And it's been sort of on a sideline because I wanted to see how much space was still available on these various landfill arrays that we're doing. But we could definitely accommodate the, you know, basically satisfy the rest of the town's appetite at one of these.
Well, if it saves us energy dollars, then we should be doing it.
Well, we'll speak up. The hydro, we net meter eight accounts, and so we have about, I think we had 23 total, so there'd be about 15 available.
Reminder, okay.
Right, but we're not maximizing the 500 kilowatts per meter.
No.
It's total, actually.
Or total.
Yeah.
No.
So, okay.
So we should try to take full advantage of it.
Absolutely.
All right. If we're gonna be producing it in town, let's take what we can get of it.
Mm-hmm.
We could also probably take care of those faster on a different array that's not in Pownell, but that's up to you. Because we have a number of other arrays that have slices of capacity that's available. It doesn't always fit perfect, perfectly together.
You were, I'm assuming you were part of the last lease that were signing?
Yeah, we had three sites. I guess they were 150 apiece. I thought they were, for some reason, 500 was sticking in my head, but I guess it was 150 apiece, and there was two at the landfill and one at the...
The wastewater.
The wastewater treatment facility. And I think one of them was off the table because of the breach in the landfill, correct?
Yes.
And so then that brought us down to two, and then the lease agreement was 3,800 a year for 10 years, then it goes up to 4,200 for the next 10 years, but it was a 20-year lease per site. And then, of course, whatever benefit we can get out of it from the, from the net metering.
And I think if I understood Ralph correctly, if they redraw the schematics of the array to maximize the wastewater treatment Superfund site, then that would increase the lease agreement, which would increase...
How much we get.
How much we get.
Right, absolutely.
Because that was 150, but you might be able to put two to three hundred up there?
Yeah, it looks like you could double it.
Probably double.
Because it is pretty flat once again.
We just have to do it a little...
But then you're also, you're also, we're also doing something that's somewhat permanent with something, with the idea of gaining the benefits of the net metering, the net metering, which may not be permanent. In fact, since we, since we were talking last year, there were changes to net metering. And if those changes occur, then we may be maxed out sooner than we think if our maximum changes.
Right, and to Bob's point, do you have any information on that? Because that has been brought up before.
Yeah, I mean, there are a couple of different things. One is that so far, there seem to be pretty solid assurances that if you, that depending on when an array is commissioned, you're eligible for whatever the incentives are at that, at that point. And so, and all the financing is based on that assumption as well. So they, so the legislature or the Public Utilities Commission can't, you know, six months or a year later, change the regulation and require arrays that are already up and running to operate under different assumptions. In other words, there's some security there about being grandfathered in under whatever the law happens to be when you get switched on. That's one thing. And the other point was that, oh, so yeah, so there is this legislation that may raise the cap and allow, in particular municipalities, to go up to, the latest thing I've heard is that they would raise the cap from 500 kilowatts to a megawatt, which would basically double what a town is eligible for. We'll see what happens.
But then, when we were having our town hall discussions, I thought we had talked about the array not being able to handle anymore, you know, I mean, those issues, too. And so, and the other side of it is also just technology. I mean, you're putting in these solar fields, right, and where is it gonna go, where is it gonna be in five years when you have solar paint, solar roofing tiles, and things that make this closer to obsolete or less beneficial? So those are considerations as well.
So you're trying to consider whether or not we're gonna buy the eight-track tape when we're moving to CDs?
Yes, we're gonna have the beta...
So I think Bob has a good point. At the end of the 20-year lease, what happens with...
The solar arrays.
With the solar array.
So at the end of 20 years, a couple of things can happen. If, if the town is amenable, there is a possibility to extend it another five years at a different lease rate, and then another five, five years, and then another five years, out to 35 years. If, or whenever the array is, you know, reaches the end of its life, lifetime, it's, we are required, and when I say we, I'll explain what I mean, but we're required to decommission the site, remove all hardware, and restore it to its original condition. And that's both a permit condition and a lease condition. And even if Green Lantern doesn't exist anymore, there's still an operating company, an LLC, that owns and pays the taxes and buys the insurance and everything for that particular array. So there'll be...
Do they have a decommissioning fund?
Thank you.
No. Under a megawatt, there is no requirement in Vermont for decommissioning funds. Over a megawatt, there is.
So God forbid the LLC goes under.
But we can request one.
You can. I mean, we wouldn't be able to get it financed.
Okay, not after the beginning.
But the thing is, the bank is in it for the duration. And so there's a lender, and then there's an LLC with an owner. And, you know, we wouldn't put our business in jeopardy by failing to, and also, decommissioning isn't particularly expensive, especially for a ballasted block system. I mean, you can literally go in there and lift them up, you know, you disconnect all of the electronics, but you can lift them up and remove them. There've been, DPS has done cost estimates of what decommissioning costs.
Now, if you start on one size site and then decide you wanna, you know, increase it, and if we put that amendment into the contract or whatever, you guys are basically, you own all the infrastructure. And so if later, latest and greatest technology comes out, rather than keep using the old stuff, I'm assuming you guys are gonna put the newer technology in the next bank, and should proceed through or...
Yeah, you know, that raises a number of different questions. One of them is that the, for solar, the technology improves very, very gradually. I mean, there aren't these like big doublings of capacity like you have with computers and cell phones and things. And so, you know, you can imagine that out, you know, maybe in 10 years...
That's one thing.
A solar panel might be able to put out 10 or 15% more than it does today. So it's a gradual efficiency improvement thing. I think that what I'm seeing, what I'm seeing is that the technology's not improving fast enough to make it, to make economic sense to take apart an array that's in the middle of its lifetime and replace it with something new. But the other thing is that we would have to apply for a new permit. I mean, if we rehabbed an array with completely new panels, for example, that would be, I think, that would change the design and the output and so forth so much that we'd have to go back to the Public Utilities Commission and ask them. And I don't know what they would say. We haven't been in that situation yet. But the last piece, though, that I also heard, I thought in your question, was what if somebody builds like a 150-kilowatt array and then decides to expand it? You know, maybe there's some additional, you know, land area or whatever. And, you know, of course, it's to the town's advantage because it's gonna generate more lease income. But to do that, it might be technically feasible, but to do that, we'd have to go to the Public Utilities Commission and ask them to amend the permit. And I've seen them prove that in certain cases.
Well, no, that's what, I'm just using your own analogy here on the wastewater site. You know, you did 150 kilowatt there, but you're looking feasibility...
I think we'd wanna maximize it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'd wanna max it out if we could.
Okay.
Yep, that's to everyone's benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Anybody else have any questions, Quorum, or... Anybody else have any questions for him before he leaves?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Thanks, Ralph.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Ralph.
Likewise, and I'll be in touch with those agreements.
Got it. Mike?
Yeah. I see the next is, the president holds a forum for the Shire Housing. Are you familiar, all familiar with Shires?
And Bennington. You're talking about what they're gonna do down here?
Well, they approached us, they came to Economic Development Committee, and they approached us about the possibility of doing some projects in Pownell. And what I want to make sure that you knew is that, granted permission, that they come in and be able to present to people the options that they have for housing. It seems like a great program. They've done a lot of things in Bennington. It would be taking people out of conditions and putting them into an alternative, which is an energy-efficient, clean, affordable home.
But it's not forcing anybody, it's just, it's giving people options.
It's an option, it's completely optional, and it would be homeownership. It would be homeownership, by and large. It could be rental, obviously, but, but again, clean, affordable, energy-efficient homes. And I think it might be in our best interest to allow them to come in and at least generate some interest from the public and see if they can't do something for our town.
So they, they came down and they showed us some options that they're building around the state. And it's really more of an educational thing for individuals who may be renters, who wanna become homeowners, feel that they can't afford to buy a home. But there's also options of buying current homes, and they can guide them on what's out there and available and options to take an existing empty home that they can't afford to buy and make it energy-efficient, stuff like that. So it's really, it's educating folks on what's out there, what's available.
Now, it doesn't affect the tax. I mean, it's not a reduced tax type system to the Shires or anything like that.
No.
They build a house if someone's interested in their, in their product, so they're getting into a better, better household, and then that's taxed the same way as the rest of our tax.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that's, some of the Shire stuff I know was reduced, they...
It's not low-income housing.
Okay, that's...
No, 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 yeah. I mean, not unless a homeowner or a property owner wants to invite them in and say, "I'd like to take 10 acres of my property and create affordable housing on it."
Well, for that, they're gonna have to go to the DRB and they don't care.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a possibility if a landowner wants to do that. But this was more inviting, more like renters to...
Possibly own their own.
Give them information as to how to go about becoming a homeowner and what options are out there for affordability. And there's a lot of options. They're the ones that have the information. They're not building it, they're just kind of helping people understand what's available.
Okay.
And I'm a little ignorant on it. Is the, is, so is Shire's the, is that a, is that a state program, a regional program? And is it, you know, a...
They, yeah, they're a nonprofit, and they work a lot with the state of Vermont. They're really, I wanna say they're really experts on the laws, the rules, and the funding sources for individuals of various socioeconomic levels.
So is it safe, so is it fair to say that they're a nonprofit that helps people navigate how to get funding for housing?
Yes, and applications for mortgages and, and what is it called? Pre-authorization, the, you know, pre-fault...
Do they help people through the whole process?
Right, yes. Yeah, yeah. And then they, in addition to doing that, they also provide lots of information. If you wanna build something, what type of affordability is out there for, I don't wanna say smart homes, for very, what do they call it? Net zero energy... Net zero, energy-efficient homes?
Yeah, green homes.
Not necessarily green homes, because they didn't get into like geothermal and stuff, but it was just really like an affordable, a small affordable home that has solar panels that helps you save money on the, yeah, the service.
Energy efficiency is a key component of what they're doing.
Yeah, credits that you could get from, what is it called? Energy Vermont.
Low energy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's all part of the green home theory.
Yes.
So where would they be thinking about holding the forum? Like a firehouse or a library?
Probably the library, the school.
Okay. Are they looking for us to coordinate it for them, or they're just looking to get permission from us?
I would likely be the one that reserves the school for them and help them with the advertising, but other than that, they'd be...
Spread the word.
Other than that, they'd be on their own.
And it might behoove us to invite them down and have them...
Come speak before the board.
Speak about what it is that they would be doing so that the community knows exactly what it is. Yeah. They have some really good ideas.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I am too.
I wonder if our energy...
Anything that helps encourage people to be able to buy a home.
It would be really good to connect Mr. Barnes with them.
I was going to say, connect them with our energy commission.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Committee.
I guess invite them down, Mike.
Okay. I will do that.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion on that?
No.
All right.
Next is a request, and you have some information in your packets. Estimate maybe 2021 to explore adopting fire and building codes for the town. There's, in economic development and other circles, planning commission members have expressed that enforcing our bylaws, having some code structure be a benefit for the community. And I just bought a house, and the effect of no codes cost me a lot of money. So I laid out some of the arguments in your letter and cited multiple articles and papers that indicate what this can do for the community for economic benefit. In fact, many of the code enforcement is part of community development, sections of It's, we've done this before, so there is nuances to it that we would have to consider. For example, I would not recommend that out of the gate, we require that everyone that does work, plumber, electrician, carpenter, has to be licensed. That would be crushing. What we should do, though, is over a period of time, require that when they do work, that it has to meet the code. And that someone we have, a code enforcement officer, fire inspector, building inspector, would inspect the building for a certificate of occupancy to ensure that the electrical code is met, plumbing code is met, and the building code is met. And again, this just cost me $9,000, and almost started my house on fire. So...
Can I weigh in on this?
Introduce yourself, please.
If you want to.
I mean, to the camera for people at home.
Banks are going crazy.
Well, no, please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Jim Gilbert. I'm the town health officer, I think.
All right, thank you. All right.
Banks are going crazy looking for requirements that a town have a certificate of occupancy at, right? As of right now, Pownall does not have a certificate of occupancy. But I know that there's pressure from the financial end of things that we develop one and that we have one in place. And I think that's a direction that we should go in. I really do. I think the town is way, way overdue to joining the 20th century, let alone the 21st. That's just my opinion.
That should take and help the insurance base also in the town, I would imagine.
Insurance services offices rates communities on a couple of different levels, and we're...
Are there any estimates on what it could potentially save on insurance?
No, sir, I don't have any potential savings. That would be, wouldn't even attempt to do that until closer to when we decided we wanted to do it and communicate that with ISO and implementation plan. What codes, how we want to implement the codes, what...
I just didn't know if the insurance companies had like a rate comparison, like, hey, towns that have codes?
Yes, they do. They, they're 1 through 9, 9, 9 is nothing. So there are some differences. Each insurance company either bundles, so if you're 1 through 3, you have a certain rating. If you're 4 through 6, you have a certain rating. Other companies are strictly on 1, 2, 3. Some companies don't, they look at laws strictly. So it's not a one-size-fits-all. What it does is it allows a business or even a homeowner to shop for insurance that recognizes the standard and allows them to purchase insurance that's recognized by the insurance company at a reduced rate.
Does this impact our bond rating at all? Does it give us a better bond rating when we have codes that are enforced?
I would say...
I don't, I don't have a positive answer to that. I don't want to answer it unless I'm sure I know.
If you can check on that, that'd be great.
I did want to, so are you recommending that we, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure with the recommendation.
Well, the recommendation is just allow me to start working toward developing ordinance for code, putting in place a plan so that for fiscal year '21, we consider, once all the information's together, consider adopting. Right now, it's a 2015 code. We would adopt the state code with some minor adjustment to it. It's taking a long time because, you know, there's certain sections of the code that are not applicable, certain sections of the code we don't want to have, and we've got to go through all those, so...
So are you saying for fiscal year '21, adopt the 2015 state code?
I hadn't finished. What I meant was that right now, it's 2015 code. So part of that is, 2018 code is out, and how long it takes for the state to adopt that, I'd be, you know, doing it all over again. So it would be a process by which I'd be dotting i's, crossing t's, identifying all our costs, all our benefits, a lot of work. So I wouldn't want, this is not something I'd like to do next week, but something that I've been receiving feedback for, to start moving in that direction. And it's going to take a while.
I'm not saying there aren't any, just to chime in here, that there aren't benefits to this, or certainly benefits, but there's also costs. So it's, I did go through, just sitting here, look at some of the links and some of the background information that you gave, and it's a lot of information. But a lot of it is, is, but a lot of it is also, you know, things about this fire happened and people died, and codes would have helped here. So it's symptomatic in its approach, and it's also, and we need to be mindful that it does create cost, it does increase the cost of building, and there are disincentives to economic growth there, a result of that. And I noticed that the, and it's not criticism, but I want both sides represented.
And I will help you do that.
It's not a myth that the codes are major barriers to growth. I don't think it was the lack of codes that are causing Vermont or Pownall not to grow economically. That, I think that's, I don't believe...
I didn't suggest that was the sole reason, no.
And there is a lot of economic information out there that doesn't support some of this. I did notice some smart growth, some form-based coding, smart code, and other things in articles here. And I can name off of, off the top of my head, five or six economists who have studied this pretty much in depth that would disagree with some of the conclusions on these links. And I'm not saying that this isn't good information, I'm saying we need to take in all of the information before we make these kinds of decisions because, and I like, I do appreciate the way you approach this with, we can't, we can't adopt everything, we can't, we can't, we'll be putting people out of work if we tell them, you know.
You and I discussed this at some length before, and in support of the gentleman's position, he's absolutely correct. There is some disincentives, particularly, and I'll drop back, we have a unique opportunity to do it right. But he is correct. There are citations in places, in cities where codes are onerous and overkill. And it's a labyrinth of work to get through to adopt, or to get through, to get codes, to get even your house built. And that is absolutely correct. The unique opportunity we have is to doing it correctly. And to be able to capitalize on some of the examples that allow us to, well, it takes care of our citizens, gives them a sense that they're moving into a safe home. The banking industry is more apt to want to do loans. Insurance premiums, particularly for businesses, are negotiable. So there's a lot of positives. And he points out some of the negatives, which are very real, and the objective of this exercise, when we do this, is to avoid those pitfalls. I'm an inspector. I've seen where some of the requirements are just, you ask yourself, why?
Yeah, we don't want to do death by red tape.
Right, right. You just look at some of the code and you go, there's absolutely no palpable reason why they want this done.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Chairman. I think the work that you're proposing will be beneficial, but we also heard from one of our representatives from the Economic Development Committee last night, who also works for one of our local banks, who state, restated what Mr. Gilbert just said, was that the bank that this individual works for is looking for certificates of occupancy for the mortgages, and we don't do them. And that is a problem, and it will eventually, down the road, become a bigger issue.
It would be...
Certainly true.
It would be interesting to see if, just hypothetically, if you asked the ISO, you know, if we have a set standards, I mean, even just hypothetically, say the state, the state present standards, what would that change? Because your ISO rating for the town also affects everybody's insurance, you know, every fee payer. So not just, you know, industrial or in businesses. I mean, that's why the insurance company asks you if you have a hydrant or a water source outside your house.
I think one thing to consider is when you're looking at the references and reading the references, what I've found is that those that are, and I'm getting a little bit away from the safety codes and more toward the smart code and the form-based coding and those different things, but that's touched on in here, is that one of the things you'll find is that those who are advocates of it are largely fall in the categories of municipal planners, city planners, and some of the businesses that benefit from it. Certainly, an insurance company is going to benefit from it because they have to pay out less. And when you look at those that are providing the opposing viewpoint, and that's where it really resonates with me, is that those are economists who have actually studied the long-term effects. And so, and that's where we really have to weigh it. The economists that study the long-term effects, and I can tell you, you know, some of the initial studies that came out of this was rebuilding London after World War II. And a man named Sir Jonathan Hall did a lot of studies on this, and he did some groundbreaking work, but that led to many Nobel laureates and Nobel Prize-winning economists who did very in-depth studies on it and found that, you know, smart growth and those sorts of things really have a negative impact on economic growth and on housing cost. And I think we have a question.
Oh, sorry, Jim, I didn't see it.
My head's...
If I can just chime in again. I've been the health officer since 1994, and in my travels around town, inspecting the different houses for rental violations and things like that, I have run across some absolutely deplorable workmanship and conditions. I mean, circuits that are wired with 14-gauge wires that should have been wired with 10, you know, and things like that, two-by-three exterior walls. We should have had codes in effect a long time ago for at least minimal building standards, at least minimal building standards. People shouldn't be living in some of the shacks that they are living in. They're dangerous, they're, they're, they're just, they're a major disaster of some sort or another, you know? Wood stoves that are just piped out through the wall with no, you know, no...
No collar or anything.
Masonry around them or collar or anything, borehole, put the pipe through, up the chimney and goes. I mean, it's, there are dangers out there that people just aren't aware of, or if they are aware of them, they just ignore them.
Right.
And I'm so, it's so in favor of having at least some sort of a minimal building code in town. I really and truly am.
We've seen it in the fire department.
And I, and I agree totally. It's a, but it's a, but we really need to separate what we're doing for economic growth and what we're doing for that versus safety.
Right, like life safety versus nice-to-have.
And be careful with the safety, because the safety is also, it does add cost. And so at some point, you're, you have people living in really substandard housing because they couldn't afford the nicer housing because the codes were too high. So there is a striking balance. But I see, I see your point completely, Jim.
I would think this is definitely worth investigating and having...
Yes.
...do research and present to us and have further discussion on it.
And be cautious on the approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've experienced it, application of code, so I know exactly what he's talking about.
Okay, thank you.
If I may...
Are there, just side question, do you know if there's programs available through the state if we were to adopt codes that would help low-income people bring houses up to code?
I don't know that at all.
I think Brock does.
Well, Efficiency Vermont does some of that, too.
I was just going to say, I know I've read lots of stuff about, from Efficiency Vermont, where they've got money and grants for people to...
Well, I know like Brock will come in and they'll, they'll help people, but it's, they have a limited budget on what they can do, so I didn't know...
Right, maybe help you put in a few windows or...
Maybe the Shire...
Some masonry about around your stove pipes if you don't launch the wall on fire.
If we adopt more stringent codes, I don't want to just leave people out on the streets.
Right.
We need to also make sure we're trying to help people as well.
I completely agree with that.
And, you know, there's always community support.
And like Jim said, there's people living in shacks, like, we should be trying to help people like that if they want the help, I mean.
And I don't know if it still exists or not. I haven't looked into the budget for it, but there is a housing rehabilitation loan program that was set up in Pownall many, many years.
Still there.
And I think there's a balance in the fund that, you know, we could actually, as a town, front some money for people to make repairs on their homes. And it's an interest-free loan that comes back to the town, as long as someone's agreeable to do the work, you know?
I have that in my files, where you have money.
Okay. So as you pull information together...
The money's been growing for 20 years.
Okay. So as you pull information together for the codes, kind of dig into that, what is available to help people as well?
Got it, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other, any other questions or discussion on that?
No.
All right.
Hazard mitigation committee, we've made, we had a swing and a miss using baseball jargon. We met, we started working on this, and things kind of collapsed. I sent you all the email with some suggestions for a leaner, meaner approach to this, to get it in, get it done. One of you, me, Road Foreman, one of the planning committee, Michael Badger, and get in and get this thing done. I've updated a lot of it. There's still more to go. It's, it needs to be done, and I'd like your permission to send you a list of names. I think you have the names. So towards the end of this month, the next meeting, you can appoint a hazard mitigation committee, and we can start, we can get this thing wrapped up.
Okay. What's the deadline to have it done?
There's no particular deadline, it's expired.
So do we have one? It's just needs to be updated?
Needs to be updated, correct.
Okay.
And it's not that heavy a lift, it really isn't.
Our emergency coordinator wasn't involved in that before?
Yes, he was. And obviously, he's invited to do this.
Okay.
The next was, there was requests coming from planning commission to, and I gave you several financial options for combining zoning administrator and health officer, or do you want to keep those separate positions? How do you want to proceed? And I know I heard individually from some of you, both positive and negative, it's clearly up to you how you want to proceed, but the...
I am in favor of keeping them separate.
I'm also in favor of keeping them separate.
I am too.
Okay. I think that's...
So we don't have to vote on that because they're already, they're already separate?
Okay.
So can I ask, I'm going to play devil's advocate.
Okay.
Can, can the same person apply for both?
I don't see why they could.
I think they can. We've never done that, but the same person could hold both positions, but they would be two separate positions.
Right, but that's what I wanted to make clear, because we do that for another elected official.
Right.
And so if we do it for one, we should do it for, not have a... Not have a... not stipulate that an individual can't apply for both and be appointed to both.
I would just say, again, we have to be very cautious about it, because I do see some checks and balances that would go away if those two things were combined.
Oh, I'm not saying combine it.
No, not combine, the same person doing both. Because that... if the same person's doing both, it's kind of... it's not... At least for that term, it's the same effect as combining them functionally. And so I... and I think there are some downsides to it. There's definitely some advantages to it, too, but that does give that individual a lot more power. And those are decisions that should be separate. And whether or not somebody... one person doing both of those jobs can make those determinations completely separate and not be biased in that determination is really questionable. And we're buying some risk when we put them together.
And I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying that we have a similar situation. And the similar things can happen, but it's been allowed.
Yep.
But allowed on what to post, and is there...
We have a treasurer and a delinquent tax collector who's the same person.
That's true, but there's less of a... there's less of a...
There's still differences. There's still checks and balances that should be done separately, but... And it's... I'm not saying anything negative. It's being done fine.
But here's what...
And managed fine, so I just don't want it to look like we're allowing it for one person and not potentially going to allow it for others. So I just want to be fair. I just want to make sure that they're fairness and...
I want to be fair, too, but it's not fair.
It puts it on a different level.
Yes and no. Go ahead.
I think the point that Bob's trying to make is that, say, we get a complaint of one type, and if I'm holding two hats, for instance, and it's like, "Well, it really doesn't fall under that one, but I can take and circumvent it by going this way." And I think that's basically what you're saying, is rather than have two different set of eyes looking at the issue.
Yeah, like if you go to a property for a zoning issue and you see a health code violation that was not reported.
Right, and then...
Or use one, or your judgment changes a little. I think the other one is, do you want the prosecutor to also be the judge?
And I'm not disagreeing with you guys on that at all. I'm just saying that we...
You're giving the opposing view, which is fine.
Right. I'm not in disagreement. I'm actually in agreement, but I'm just saying that...
So then, do we actually want to put a stipulation in that you can't have the same person be both? Because it kind of almost seems like that's where the opinions are heading.
Well, my theory with keeping them separate is because, in my opinion, as long as we have people that are willing to do different jobs, then we shouldn't be allowing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to do anything to discourage people from trying to go for jobs.
Right.
Especially if we get somebody who's highly qualified and willing to do it.
Right. I mean, if somebody... that's the reason, my main reason why I want to... I personally want to keep them separate is as long as we...
So I guess, for me, it would almost tie back into what we were discussing before about letters of interest and, you know, more than just like, "Hey, I want the job."
Right.
Give us some information.
I feel very strongly about keeping them separate.
Yeah, I want to keep them separate.
I don't feel quite as strongly about whether or not we can exercise some judgment and give that position to the same person if we don't have the level of interest or the caliber of people that you need in order to do both of those jobs.
I think I know my direction. Good rational discussion.
I mean, keep it separate. I said, I was in agreement. I just...
Having worked hand-in-hand with Nelson for many, many years, there's lots of times where I'm able to provide him with assistance and he's able to provide me with assistance as a crossover, you know. I know his job pretty much, and he knows my job pretty much. And we maintain a pretty tight communication between zoning and health, because there's a lot of gray areas out there where something may be a health offense or it may be a zoning offense. And we handle them together.
Thank you.
We try to do the best we can with it now.
But it's good to work with... it works with the individual. I mean, I totally agree with that. But at the same thing, I believe in another set of eyes on a situation, because one person may see something differently than the other person. And I just... I mean, that's kind of how I...
Yeah, I don't think we're going to go wrong keeping them separate.
So other than deciding that we're definitely posting them separately, did we agree that the language needs to be, it cannot be the same person?
Well, I don't want to stipulate that. It depends on the applications.
I mean, someone can apply to both, and then we can, you know, it's not...
That language doesn't exist today, right?
No, we would have to craft something and adopt it. That's not something we're going to cover today, anyway. Other than we could start the process and ask Michael to craft something to that effect for us.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
But I mean, I know we started discussing for all-appointed positions, more than just a letter of interest, maybe a brief resume, something like...
Not even a letter of interest.
Yeah.
Hey, Linda, I want to be appointed to this.
It'd be nice to have a little bit more, be like, "Hey, I'm so-and-so. I live here. Here's why I'm interested in these."
This is my background.
At least a brief cover letter. I mean, we could do something like that.
We'll cover that down under Old Business Series. Okay.
That's finished. I want to be out of here before 11:00.
Request to attend... request you approve me attending the economic summit May 23 at Mount Snow at a cost of $75 plus mileage. This is where I'm going to be making attempt to get that racetrack in the top 10 of priority for Southern Vermont Economic Development. I don't know how I'll fare, but I'm going to give it my best shot.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that was interested on our economic boards?
You know what? Be honest with me, I did not ask.
I was wondering. I'm just...
I did not. I didn't even think to ask.
What's the deadline for registration?
I don't know that either, so I'm a bag of information right now.
I mean, I just think, I mean, having a couple people go up, if there's interest, I mean, it's...
I'll check on that. I'll email them as soon as we get done.
Do you know what day of the week the 23rd is?
Oh, I think it's like a Thursday or...
It's like a Wednesday.
Wednesday?
It's a Thursday.
Fifteenth, so Wednesday, so yeah. That would be eight days, 1/3.
It's a Thursday.
I'll send out an email.
It's not a weekend.
No. So I'd like to make a motion that we allow Michael to attend the economic summit on the 23rd. I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to approve Michael going to the economic summit on May 23 as stated. Any discussion? I have a little bit. If Michael reaches out to the Economic Development Committee and somebody wants to go, do we want to just give approval now to be able to send somebody else if they want to go?
Yeah, up to a couple more people, to more people.
Do we have a budget for all of these committees and things?
There's a budget for training. I think that's...
I know we have a budget. Yeah, we absolutely have a budget, right? I just don't want to...
Not to accommodate a whole lot.
Not everybody.
Well, no, I don't anticipate the whole committee going, but if one other person wanted to go.
I'd like to table that and discuss it further.
On adding somebody? So just approve just Michael now?
On just approval of non-employee training coverage.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's... I think what you're saying is, you know, it's one thing for us to pay for employee to do it, but then if somebody else wants to go to it, they should pay the $75 and drive themselves. In fact, they can even give Michael a ride.
I take my shoes off when I leave the car, so it's not a good thing.
All right, so then...
We're approving Michael.
We're approving just Michael. All right. All in favor of just approving Michael? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Sir, MVP is our health care plan for our employees. It is time for this to be signed, and it's the coverage plan. It comes out differently than Blue Cross and Shield. When it came out, I went, "Why now?" And I called them up and they said, "Well, this is when we execute agreements." This was a plan that was selected prior to your draw-up appointment. It represented savings over Blue Cross. All the employees had partook in the discussion. And has anybody had any problems yet? I mean, I haven't heard anything.
I asked. I know when we first ventured into changing up, it was with the understanding that if this plan didn't work for us, that we could go backwards.
Obviously.
And...
Obviously.
And no one's had any... hasn't experienced anything. We've had it about six months.
This is the most... probably gave me the shakes to do this toughest decision, to present this, because it's a big deal. And I wanted to make sure that we had spot-on coverage for everyone at the savings that they prescribed. So...
So changing... has that changed the cost of the town?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I think it was roughly 8% total, but it varies per employee. It went down.
Went down from changing.
So do you just need Brian to sign?
Yes, you all approve it, but yes, he signs.
There's two spots. He signs both?
I would sign both, yes.
Yay me. All right, so is there any discussion on this? No, I wanted the purple one today.
I just bring the purple one. It ran out of ink.
That's unacceptable.
I brought the light blue.
All right, so are the employees happy with this health insurance?
There hasn't been any issues that I'm aware of. I've reached out and asked.
So move to...
Yeah, before I sign it, I guess. Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
New.
Renew it. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to renew MVP health insurance for town employees. All in favor, say aye. Or any discussion, I should say.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's it for me. Unless you have some of the other information, or some of the other items you have information from.
Okay.
I don't at the moment. If my vice chair wants to move us along while I finish signing this, that's okay.
Okay. Moving on to proposal on select board member terms and other appointees with stipends. So let's call this like B1 and B2, because they're really separate. B1, proposal of select board members' terms, on the member terms. So I drafted up a recommendation and laid it out over the next two years, a proposal, and just looking for some feedback whether or not you want to adopt it. It's basically taking all the two one-year terms and moving them to a three-year term, but phasing it in over the next two years so that after 2021, there will always be three people remaining on the board. So only the rotation would be two people would be up for election, three people would be on. Then the next year, one person would be up for election, but three people, four people would be on. And then the next year, two people would be up for reelection, and three people would remain. And then I think that would stagger the participation better.
Is it ever going to line up to where you end up with everybody?
No, no, if you look at it, because of the way the terms are. So there'll always be two people...
The way it's structured now, I think it is that way. It's that three people are up every year. There's one three-year position and two one-year positions. And I just caution against... I know we had a turnover this time, but that was because of a resignation and the way the election went, we got four new people.
Actually, two.
Just so this... and I like the way you structured it. But I would be very cautious about changing the structure. I mean, if the one-year positions... Ronnie was a one-year position, and he had been elected multiple times. And, you know, if people are happy with them, they can continue to vote them in. And we didn't have a whole lot of turnover on the board. I think this was a big one this year. But then you also are limiting the voting public's ability to clean house if they're not satisfied with who's in there. I mean, there's two sides of it, right? You can get a dud that then has two more years, two more years on the board that the voters don't like or don't want. And the other side of it is exactly what you're trying to address.
Right.
But that's where I... that's why I believe that's why the three-year and the one-years, and it's weighted toward the three-year term. So the problem we had this time was that we had a resignation.
Yeah, so it hit the board hard.
So there's always three people maximum that are being reelected every year.
Right. And you have to assume that usually somebody, one of those, at least one of those gets reelected. Usually, on all fours they may not.
But it's set up so that if the voters do want to make a change, they can.
Right. And when I reached out to the VLCT, they just said that we can do whatever... We can propose whatever we want. So I just came up with a proposal. It's up for discussion. We don't have to vote on anything, but that's... I was just...
I'm in agreement with Bob on this, as far as changing it. I'm reluctant to, you know, you might get a good group, but God forbid we get a bad group in.
And then you're stuck with it.
Then you're stuck with them. And then it's going to take a long time to be able to try to cycle people out. That would...
They can always resign, as happened in the past.
Well, resignations are a chance that you take no matter what term they take.
As also has happened. Okay, so then moving on, I don't know... I think Brian, you were supposed to talk about appointees with...
The proration of select board stipends.
Yeah, because I don't know what the other appointees with stipends.
I failed on that. That was a lot on my plate, and I dropped the ball on that one. But basically, the idea was... Yeah, we can table it, and I'll get with Michael and see if Michael will help me draw something up.
Okay.
I know what I'm thinking right now is just something along the lines of if somebody resigns or leaves the position for whatever reason, we just prorate it to the week based on what the stipend is, whether it be monthly or yearly.
Right, and that's what we're trying to figure out right now.
You do have to think about how you're going to pay them, too, because I think the pay structure right now is you get paid at the beginning, right? Everybody gets a check. And then if somebody resigns, do they owe you money back? You have to think of...
Well, I think right now you can't collect it until after the beginning of the budget year, correct?
Correct.
Well, it's true, but that only means that March, April, May. You'll only be in... right, it's the end of the year, right?
But didn't you also mention something about getting paid at the end of your term cycle for that year?
Well, traditionally, that's what a lot of the former select board members have done, is they take their payment toward like, you know, tax time, and then they just put it toward their property taxes.
I'm not against it.
At least that's what I've been told.
I'm simply saying is if you're going to write something up, keep that in mind.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to prevent somebody who happens to serve, you know, two months in, resigns, puts in for their full payment, this person that steps in, they then put in for full payment, because there's only a certain budget for select board members.
Yep.
Total agreement.
So that's... so whatever structure, I mean, that's completely open to debate, however we want to word it.
Right.
I was just thinking, if you do it on a prorated, break it up by the week, you served, you know, 12 weeks out of a 52-week term, you should only be getting paid for the 12 weeks, which for a select board member works out to about $28 or $29 a week, if you work it out by the week.
About 38 cents?
It's like 28.63.
About 4 cents an hour.
Per week.
About that. Seems fair.
The next item was, I went back and I made the recommendations to the procedure that we talked about a month or so ago. And then in conversation with the VLCT, their recommendation was to combine it and make it applicable to commissions and committees so that everybody's following the main. They can make their rules a little bit stricter. Committees and commissions can make their rules stricter, but they have to meet the minimal...
Our base.
The base, because there wasn't a base, and everybody was all over the place. So the VLCT helped me recraft it. The only thing I didn't get a chance to ask them was, instead of saying panel boards, commissions, and committees throughout the entire thing, I called it the... I referenced it as the body going forward so that I didn't have to type it so many times. So that's what A is really covering, and B, where it says the body. And then on page two, I changed via Skype for how people are attending the meeting to alternative technological means to cover current and future technology so that we don't have to keep updating it. So if we're going to be doing it through... what the heck is a new one? Portal?
Yeah.
If we get Bob a portal, so when he's in Austin, we can make sure he's paying attention to the board meeting and not like sunbathing out on like the...
You have a hologram on it.
Although I got to admit, in the middle of winter, I would be really jealous if that's what Bob was doing.
So I just blanket changed it to alternative technology means. Down under item 12 was just making the language, the body. It's just a lot of replacing the blank with the body. I need clarification under Section D agendas, item two. We have the wording, the following designated public places in the municipality. We have the wording, the following designated public places in the municipality. We didn't list any. So either take it out or list them is my recommendation.
Well, could you put like an asterisk in there and just put like a?
Like a footnote?
Yeah, a footnote.
Yeah.
And do I have the locations in the comma, comment box three correct? Winchester's the town office. Is there anywhere else that we?
Little market.
Anywhere else?
Should we put wording in there, you know?
Website.
Is it supposed to be four or three?
Three.
Three.
Website.
Website.
Or as otherwise dedicated.
Shall be posted in or near municipal office at the finally, blah, 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 blah. It's available in person if anybody was to come in to the meeting. Um, I do reference the panel website into A, so that's covered Linda. So just adding.
But it doesn't give the website.
Oh, like list the website name?
Well, I'm just thinking, kind of the same thing. If you're listing location, you should say the location. If you're gonna say, go to the website. What's website?
Yep, I can do that. Okay. So that's page two. Page three, under meetings. I was just fixing wording, wordsmithing. Section F, committee appointments. So this was a section that I expanded on regarding committee appointments. Um, to. Add in the wording and the language regarding. You can't just email Linda and say, hey, I wanna be appointed as the fence reviewer. You need to submit something. And I think we all agreed that we would like individuals who are looking to be appointed to especially stipend positions to show up and.
Right.
Tell us, introduce themselves before we make appointments. And then I added in some language regarding when there's. More parties interested than there are positions that each party member should at least present. And then we really should do the nomination, um, by Australian ballot. As opposed to how we did it the last time. We knew ahead of time that Fred had submitted his letter of resignation. But it, it was a disservice to Mr. Bushy because he sat here the entire night. And we ended up appointing everybody that was previous. And, and I just felt that that was so wrong. Um, and folks that actually show up should receive, um, I don't wanna say s- special consideration. But special consideration. I mean, I can't think of any other way to put it. If they may be ever to show up and sit here, that's fair.
I think we did approach that incorrectly, but, um, and, and I was partially at fault on that. I mean, we all were, but.
Yeah.
You know, it was kind of just a mad dash to make nominations and.
Right, and I just don't think that's an appropriate way when Mr. Bushy sat here the whole time and I couldn't see him behind the filing cabinet.
But my, my, my point being is that it's, it's more than just who shows up and who doesn't show up.
Right.
It's that all of the, uh, all of the people who have put in need to be discussed before any nominations are open.
Right, and I.
That's really what.
And I put that in there for us, that we, we really need to receive all that information at least a week or two ahead of time, so we can review it. And not just thirty minutes before the meeting to say, oh, this is so-and-so. So that's what, um, section F covers. Um, I do have a comment regarding the form. I don't know what it was called and I couldn't find it on our website. So I do have to get that information.
The only, on section, on that section.
Sure.
Um, on number four, I, 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 I don't think that's necessary, right? The select board members serving any commission committee will do so in an ex officio capacity. If it's a, if it's a state, if it's, it's already covered by state statute for things like the planning commission. But for a select board-created commission or board, it should be ruled by the, by the, it should be the select board's decision. As to whether or not you're in a, a ex officio or, or a voting member.
So the VLCT gave me information, or gave me feedback on that. And their, their recommendation was to put something in. Because they feel that if, if select board members are sitting on other committees that make requests to go before the select board. They're coming before that member anyway. So that select board member sitting on that separate committee can advise. But shouldn't be voting on things because then it's gotta go before them as the select board to be voted on.
Well, I can send you.
So they just said to just put something in there.
I covered that with one of the lawyers in VLCT also, and I got the, uh, the, the different response. And it was that if, if it's created by the select board, it's entirely up to the.
I know.
Perhaps we should reach out to them for a third opinion and send them the emails from both of you stating the two separate opinions and let's get them to make a decision.
But we'll, we'll talk about it in ter- in real terms though. Um, if, if somebody on this board, you or I are both on the, uh, are both on the economic development committee. Should we be non-voting members on the economic? Now, they don't vote on a whole lot. Um, but, uh, but should you really be non-voting members and have less power than the, than, not that you have less power, but less of a say. Around the table than the other members of that committee. I would think not. I mean.
Well, not less of a say, but, but if you have to take a vote on something, wha- what basically they're saying is we shouldn't because. It's gotta come, wha- whatever that committee decides, it's gotta come before us anyway.
It's not a conflict.
Right. I mean, not that it really would be, but they just said that it's good to have the language in there just to address it as opposed to.
But then if that committee decides to vote on things for taking action that don't have to come before this committee, uh, before this board, uh, which they could do.
They can't. They can't because all committees appointed by the board.
No, it could be, uh, uh, because that, that committee has taken action on things and come to us with recommendations. That means somebody did the legwork and somebody was assigned to go do those things. And that means that board, uh, that commission decided who that person was going to be. And that's going to be a decision made by them around the table. Now, whether or not they take an official vote or not, or whether they just. But if you're actually asking that commission whether or not, um, you know, uh, uh, are we gonna send Michael to, uh, to the economic summit? Or are we gonna send, uh, 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 Brian, or are we gonna send you, are we gonna send me? Uh, you would have just, I would think that the, that board members would have just as much of a say on those types of things as anyone else.
Right, they're saying that you can't offer the input if you're sitting on that committee or that commission. But you shouldn't be voting on stuff that's then going to come before the board because you're gonna be voting on it at the board level anyway.
Well, then would you rather have, have the, the select board member than abstain?
Yeah, at, on the committee level.
Something coming from their committee?
Right.
If you know it's gonna move forward.
Well, maybe it's just the definition, maybe I've got the wrong definition of ex officio. I, I assume that that means you don't vote on anything. Because, um, when the, when you're talking about the planning commission, they actually vote on stuff.
Yeah.
And then, and, and, but they don't.
So I think it should be pick one or the other. Are you gonna?
Right, right.
If it's an issue from the planning commission and you voted on it and the planning commission comes before the board, you should step back, be like, I abstained.
Right.
Uh, but the reason it's on the planning commission is because, um, you do vote for things that don't come before the board, right? And, uh.
Yeah, but items not coming before the board, it, it wouldn't matter then.
Right, but then.
So I can add that into section four and I can just say, you know, um. When serving on any committee or commission.
If it's gonna come forward.
That vote on items to come before the board, a board member sitting on that committee or commission should abstain.
I guess I, I, I don't wanna beat, to beat a dead horse here, but, um, um, I, it's, for the, for the things that matter. The planning commission, the things that are ruled by the state, it's already covered by state statute. And so, uh, if, um.
So just having it in redundant.
Um, I, I don't see the need because it's, uh, I mean, when the select board puts together their own commissioner board. We're in complete control of the rules of that commissioner board. And if we decide that the economic development committee, I'm not picking on them. But, uh, but, uh, if we decide the economic, uh, development committee is, uh, of, or the select board members on there are abusing their power. Then we can, then we can actually change that committee and make it specific to that committee. But we don't have to make it a, uh, at least I don't think so. That's my opinion.
Well, I think we should leave it in there for, for something like that. Like you said, the DRB and the commit, the planning commission already ha- are covered by the state. The economic development committee is a committee appointed by the board who reports directly to the board who has no.
Not just appointed by the board, but created by.
Created by the board and they.
We can create it however we want. And that's what I'm saying, and this would limit how we can create it.
Let me finish. It was created and specified that they cannot do anything without board approval.
Right.
They can bring things that they vote on, that they'd like to move forward with, but it has to come before the board before any action is taken on it.
Right.
I mean, gathering information, filling out a grant application and bringing it to the board and explaining what it is and asking for authorization for it. They can do that stuff, but they can't. It was very specific. They cannot do that. And as a sitting board member on that committee, I would be uncomfortable voting on things like that. When I know it's gotta come before me as a board member.
I would think you just, you would pick one or the other at that point. If you're, if you're gonna feel uncomfortable serving on a, on a committee. Don't.
So change the language, leave the language, but we have, but we should have something in there that addresses it. That was my recommendation. You got a different recommendation from a different person at the VLCT.
And that's where it came from. I asked the question because of, um, uh, because I had interest in being on that committee. And then, so I asked what the, what the rules are. And then what I got back was it's entirely up to this board.
Cause it's a board created.
Correct.
Board created.
Correct.
So it's up to us to determine the rules.
Yeah, so, and, and so if we vote to keep it in, we'll keep it in. If we vote not to keep it in, we'll take it out. I mean, I'm one of five votes.
So we'll just.
Well, with both of you on it, if you, if we do ex officios, if we let you vote on, you know, to bring something before us, make a good pitch, cause you gotta get all three of us.
Okay, um, and then meeting attendance, the VLCT gave me language to put in here, which should have been in here. Um, and it's, it's word for word out of the statute that they sent me. And that's under section B, G one B. And I think that's it, other than just some formatting issues with the, uh, labeling.
Uh, the only thing is I, I, I'm not exactly sure. I, I, when it says the legislative body, I assume it's talking about the select board. Even if it's talking about a select board-created commission.
Yes.
I don't think it should be up to the chair of the commissions or the boards that are created by the select board. It should be up to the select board.
Where are you reading, Bob?
One.
Yeah, one, any.
Yeah.
B one?
Unanimous.
Oh, B one, thank you. Uh, that's the language right out of the statute that they sent me. They said this is, put this, this is exactly what you need to put in there.
But if it's covered by statute, then it's, then it doesn't apply to a board, to a select board-created commission. It only applies to those that are covered by state statute. And that would be the planning commission, the DRB, the, the select board.
You can take it up with them. This is exactly what they sent me and said, this is what you wanna insert.
It's not, it's gotta be unanimous vote. It's not up to just a chair. Is that what you were, is that what you were, that's what I thought you said.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I just meant that, uh, when it says of the legislative body. So I believe by legislative body, even if you're talking about, and I'll use the economic development committee as the example, cause it's the easiest one to talk about. If you're talking about the economic development committee, does that unanimous vote mean everyone on that committee? Or does it mean everyone on this board?
Okay. No, no, we're, the board, we are, we are, we are part of the legislative.
Right.
We derive our power directly from them.
Right.
That's what I was saying. If you're referencing the statute, it almost has to be the board.
Right, no, it is.
Doesn't cover the.
It, it is, and I'm trying to remember who, whether it was Garrett that sent me this or who it was, but they, they were very specific. And it's, it's two different statutes, cause one is addressing like, um, like a planning commission. And, and any appointed committees by the board. And item number two is specific to the development review board, very specific. And there's two totally different processes that have to be followed, two different statutes that address them. Which is why they said that's exactly what.
Well, no, the planning commission has it in their own, their own rules for, you know, disciplining and bringing it before us to ask to have somebody removed.
I don't necessarily know to follow up with Michael, cause Michael was very.
I, I, I sat through their meeting where they approved that.
Okay, so then they've got the same language. Yep. So then, so then they're, then they're, then they're meeting the statute. Okay. So those are just, um, the edits that I made to that. And I can change it again if you need.
Uh, well, other than the few things we mentioned where, you know, at, where the body.
Yep.
Spelling out what that is, the website, the list of locations.
Mm-hmm. And updating the actual name of the document that.
Yes.
Appoint the interested party should complete.
And you made everything gender neutral.
Yes, I'll read through it one more time, the best I could.
Okay.
Okay.
But I will.
Thank you. Okay.
Alright. Town office discussion. Forgive me, I forget what we were supposed to discuss in that because we were doing interviews this week, so.
Were we just reminding folks that were, um, interviewing the last two?
Yeah, just another.
Um, individuals that submitted RFQs? Are they RFPs or RFI's? Because people refer to them as RFPs, okay. So just to clarify, these are not RFPs, these are not bids, these are RFQs. Cause I think language is being used interchangeably in it.
We put it out, we put this one out as an RFP, we put the consultant out as an RFQ. Now, whether or not that we're labeled correctly or not, but that's what we put out.
So those are Friday, starting at six P M.
Tomorrow, six P M, open to the public.
We probably wanna say that it's open to the public and our intent was that the, the one that we already had, where we interviewed three of the candidates. Was intended to be an open set, well, it was an open.
It wasn't.
Right.
But it was also intended to be, uh, to broadcast, but we didn't, uh, but we didn't have someone there. Right, um, I think we, we asked, but you guys weren't available, or they weren't available.
Yeah, correct.
Um, so unfortunately, that also means that nobody can view it. So, um, they will be able, I, do we know if CAT TV's coming tomorrow?
Don't know.
Is he still awake over there?
I don't know.
For what?
Uh, in town, uh, we're interviewing a couple of the candidates for, uh, for the town hall proposals.
Is it fair to have them come and do two when we didn't do the three?
It's probably better that we don't if we haven't the first one. That's a good point.
Well, it wasn't that we didn't ask them for it, just that they didn't send somebody.
Yeah, right. We, we did request it, um, at the last regularly scheduled town meeting.
Yeah, so people can come.
Yep. CAT TV couldn't accommodate. Um, okay.
Okay.
Um, I make a motion that we.
Enter into executive session.
Executive session for personnel.
I second that.
Alright, we have a motion enter into executive session for personnel. Any discussion? Anybody need a bathroom break?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so let's table that motion and make a motion to take a five-minute break.
I second that.
Alright, all in favor of taking a five-minute break? Say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Marlene or who?
I made the motion, she seconded.
I second it.
They, flip a coin.
Flip a coin.
Aye.